So I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Special Fiscal Committee of Bloomington County Council for Thursday, August 21st, 2025. While we have many members, Hobi Stossberg, Isak Asari, and myself, Isabel Naas Smith, present. And then from the office of the City Clerk, we have City Clerk Nicole Bolden, Deputy Lieutenant, Sophia McDowell, from the council office with Lisa Lerner, attorney. And then we have Deputy Mayor Gretchen Naas. It's been a long week. And we have Control Justin Flock. So thank you all for being here. Thank you to any members of the public. Oh, and Councilmember Rollo is in the waiting room. We'll have to wait in committee here. All right, I'd like to start by maybe moving things around a little bit on the agenda because I believe Councilmember Asari has to leave at 12. Is that still true?
Yeah.
Um, so since he is kind of our liaison between the Fiscal Committee and the Budget Task Force, I wanted to move up item number five in the agenda, which is plans to follow up on the 2026 budget process. Move that ahead of item number two and then proceed down. What's the member Asari?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Councilmember Stossberg?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so because we we're maybe getting ahead of ourselves on Monday at the first budget hearing and asking, well, how do we do now? How do we follow up? How do we give feedback process? Um, I wanted to kind of open that up. And I know Councilmember Asari has some ideas on that. So maybe, I don't know if you want to go first, Isak and?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, and I think it's, it may be more useful to hear from Gretchen and the Controller. I mean, what is, you know, the question that that I think a lot of us have is like, what is, what is useful and needful feedback at this time, you know, and, and, and what's the sort of horizon of, of, of impact there? And that's in terms of, I think, the sort of process questions, right? And so, so because in every single presentation, we've asked these questions about, you know, have we determined the outcomes correctly? Have we, how do we present this? You know, those type of questions. But then I think that there's also the question, and as we're doing it this year, what do we want to do between now and the time that we actually submit the appropriation ordinance or whatever the ordinance is called? In terms of discussions, because I mean, you know, the way that we've done the, the budget hearings, we haven't given ourselves a lot of space really to, to sort of opine or to debate or discuss. And so sort of, I think that those are, those are the sort of two question marks for me. I said, like, I'm, I'm very happy to write like a white paper, for example, answer, you know, with attempts of answering all of the questions that are laid out in the, in the packet. But yeah, so, so first sort of what's, what's helpful, what's needed? And then thinking, thinking ahead of this year specifically.
Well, from my standpoint, I'll go first and then you can go. But thinking about our process.
Sorry, there's somebody in the waiting room. I just want to make sure they get in. Sorry, Gretchen.
No problem. Um, you know, we don't need to answer each and every one of those questions in the budget book immediately because they're big, long-term questions. But I think if we can all understand kind of the three stages of the process and the software, that will really help because if we do the first step right, the second step and the third step get much easier. And so the first step that we have to get right is the program inventory. And this is super tedious work. I just want to acknowledge this in advance. No one wants to talk about where certain dollars for really boring routine city functions go, but every single dollar has to be allocated to a program. That's the foundation. So there will be a lot of really boring there. So I think for me, what would be most helpful from you, and I think actually next Monday's presentations will be a good kind of compare and contrast, is how granular do you want the programs to be? So when we come in next week on Monday, you'll see two very different approaches from Parks and from CFRD. Parks naturally has divisions like youth sports, adult sports, things like that in their, the way they do their work, the way they budget already, because they have such a unique budget structure with revenues, they, they approach it that way already. And so they didn't bother to go through and say, youth soccer, adult soccer, youth, you know, football or whatever. They just say youth sports, adult sports. CFRD doesn't have a bigger structure like that. So their programming is spread out literally program by program. So there's Wear Orange Day, there's, I can't even remember. Like Black History Month, is that one program? Or are all of the individual things that happen in Black History Month one program? Are all of the commission-driven events just commission-driven events? Or are they filed under some other category? So theirs is very, very granular. And I think it's really helpful at this stage so that we all know exactly what they do. I think it's gives some insight on how much they do. But in terms of budgeting, it's probably too granular. I'm certain it's too granular. So that's where it would be helpful for you guys to know. Where, what things do you want to see pulled out? And what things do you feel like could be collapsed? That would be step one. I think the next thing that would be valuable for me.
And to clarify, to clarify on that, you mean for this year's budget, it would be useful to have that answer or?
No, no, it doesn't matter for this year's budget. We will not be implementing, finalizing all of this by the time we have to submit this year's budget, and we don't need to. I'm thinking as we complete outcomes-based budgeting or even priorities-based budgeting for next year. So that's why we made all this transparent this year, so that you would have something to look at, because it's really hard abstractly to just say, well, I think they should be kind of granular. It's easier to see, this is how one department did it, this is how another department did it. So for next year, that's, and for the continued implementation of this process, that's what we need to do. But everything that we need to do for submitting a budget this year, we've already done because that'll be just like last year. What, what the state gets from us is what it's always gotten. So what, all this new stuff we're doing doesn't impact that regular work.
Um, if I could just interject before you continue with your, you know, request of us. So these program inventories are obviously just a first step, I think. But even in these early steps, we need to think about what outcomes we want to see and how we measure them. And I think that is getting a little bit lost this year as far as we're, we're focusing on these categories and these buckets and these suburbs. Um, they don't always connect back to outcomes. And we, we haven't really broken down the, the general buckets. Okay, one, you know, public safety, sure. What does that mean? We want to have, you know, reduce crime on, have fewer people living under, you know, that home, whatever.
So it has, it has to be an iterative process because as I said, every single thing that we do has to have a dollar tag to it. So if we were to only talk about what do we think and start there without looking at the list of programs and say, what outcomes only do we want? Nobody is ever going to think about, wow, I really hope that all of our regulatory compliance stuff for XYZ issue is filed on time. But that is the thing that is going to have to have dollars attached to it if it's work that someone does. So it's an iterative back and forth process. So yes, you're totally right. And that's why I gave you all this detail because in the process of trying to create those clusters or even just trying to put programs into outcomes, all of those questions come up. So definitely you want to think about, and that, that should be the guiding light on how tightly we cluster, unpack things is what do we really want to measure? And if there's something that is not as important to us to measure as an outcome or we feel like it has an outcome that's already measured, like you're compliant or you're not, that probably doesn't need to be that granular because we don't, we're not looking that closely at it. But if you want to be really granular about something like alternative response or community support to agencies that deal with immigrants or whatever that issue is, that should be more granular. So it is back and forth. And those kind of clusters that we created, it's just, it's temporary for the purposes of not having the list of programs be totally overwhelming and to show the task ahead. So yes, you do have to think about what are the outcomes you want to measure. But then in terms of saying, what is the outcome we want? I don't, if we don't know what the program is and who's doing it and what its current process is and how long-term the goal is, it's pretty hard to just say, I think our outcome should be twice as many roads paved next year as this year. No one has asked how much that would cost if the staff could do it, if it's possible from a weather standpoint, like there are a million things that feed into defining the outcome. So it, it is kind of that. It's going to have to go back and forth like that a little bit.
To me, it seems like, I understand what you're saying and I'm not. This is not criticism of any, of anybody. Because I know we're trying to achieve a goal that is huge, huge change and requires us to rethink things. But when I look at goals of departments and programs, I feel like I got more last year than this.
You did, because we spent all of our time this year working on trying to get the new software going and putting information into it, hoping we would be further along than we were by this time. But by the time we got to the point where we realized, hey, this software requires a lot, you know, garbage in, garbage out, you have to be a lot more careful about what you put in. Too much time could pass and we had to start building the budget book. We defined the priorities in May. You guys went on recess. In July, everybody has to start pranking this stuff out for the budget book. So there just wasn't enough time to do it. We can do it. We want to do it. But this is what we could do in the time we have. And so if I had known back in May when we set our priority buckets, that we wouldn't be able to make as much progress as we wanted with the software. Just it takes longer. Sure, I would have said, let's go back and just do it exactly the old way. But then it would be next year exactly where we are right now, knowing what we're dealing with. So.
Yeah. So, so I have, and this might also maybe be clarifying in terms of the, and, and, and also aware that, that you were in the middle of a list, Gretchen, so we should come back to it. So I don't mean to digress. But the, I think one of the things that, that, that Isabel's pointing out, like if we, if we take a step back here and let's, let's, let's actually talk about what the residents of Bloomington have elected us to do and our, our appointed job. Like, we actually have a job that we're elected to do and a responsibility that we're, that we, that we swear to do. And, and so a lot of what we think about, I think we're, you know, we're all, we, we've had a lot of our conversations from the perspective of, of city employees. I think that's been fantastic. I think that's been productive. But we also need to think about what, what do we need to do in this process so that we as council members can do what we have to do as, as, in our elected job? And that's actually, you know, hold accountable the, the, the finances of the city. And I think that in the, in the, in the way that we're at right now, I, I personally, like it, like where the, the level of, the level of my ability to do my job, like it's, like I can't, I can't honestly do that to a high level, right? And there's other structural limitations that are outside of our process, but I think that we've put some additional ones onto it this year. And so I just think we need to, as we're thinking about the next couple of months, also think about, you know, because, because I mean, you know, the antithesis, the antithesis to that is that the council would use tools that are available to the council to, to, to make those type of things happen. I don't think that that's the outcome that, that any of us want. I don't think, you know, we want to sort of process where, where council is like looking at, you know, line item questions, like, so, so we, we need to get to a, a place where we're able to actually do what we need to do as well. And I don't think that we've had, that that's, I think that's been a bit of a blind spot in our, in our thinking about this transition.
So like, one thing that may not be apparent to everyone is what New World tracks is line items and divisions. It does not track program costs. So if you want to know what a program costs to run, which is I think what you're saying, like, if there's something that has an outcome that we're interested in, what does it cost to do that? New World is not super efficient for figuring that out. People track on spreadsheets. Or Jessica has to pull from multiple different places and none of that information includes staff costs. So some of the programs that we all care about the most are 100% staff costs. And it's staff who do multiple things, not just one thing. It's great when there's a person who only does one thing and then we can say all of their salary goes to this. But for most programs, it's multiple people, fractional time. So if you want, so Councilmember Flaherty was asking the great question, which is the reason why we're doing this, which is how can we see a list of what do we do? What does it accomplish for the citizens? What does it cost? And how good is it at doing that compared to the cost? That's the point of all of this. But that data doesn't really exist for a lot of work that we do. So I think last year, Ham did present more data on individual programs like here's, and it's easier to say, here's what we spend or give out, here's what we award in grants than it is to say right now, what does it cost to actually administer that? So all of those things that you want to know, I also want to know.
Of course. Yeah, yeah.
That data. And so again, with places like Parks and Public Works where they already have divisions and they split things up in New World, we can get some great numbers. For other departments, it's really difficult to even get it for a focus area, much less a similar program. But we'll get there and it'll be.
Yeah, exactly. And, and, and I think we all acknowledge that the direction that we're going in. And I think, you know, like, to be clear, it's, it's sort of, it's sort of like when you start cleaning a house, that in-between step, you're always like, ah, we've made all this progress, but then you look at your house and it's like, oh. You know what I'm saying? Like, so, so that in-between step is always frustrating and, but, but I, but I, and I don't know, I don't know, you know, Isabel, correct me if I'm wrong. I don't want to put words in your mouth. But, but, you know, what, what resonates to me from what Isabel's saying is, is there's a, you know, there, there's a question here for the next several months. We have the long term. I think we all agree on the, where we're trying to go, what we're trying to achieve. You know, and, and, and the fact that this is a heavy lift. But I do think that in the, you know, in, in, as relates to this year, there's, there's this question about how do we, how do we meaningfully contribute to this budget process now? When, when those questions about, I mean, I'll, I'll, if, if I could pick on, I'll pick on ourselves, okay? When we're, when we were talking about council budget, we, I, I clearly said, like, I'm like, look, I think there's a problem with us putting money towards consultants because of the way that we organize ourselves as council. I can say that very clearly and people might disagree with me and I'm probably wrong because I'm wrong about most things. But I can, that's a thing I can attach to. It's really difficult to have any of those discussions with, with any of the other things, right? Like, so, and, and it's not about just staff time. And like, I don't think that that's what's muddling it. I think that it's because we've made these large buckets. It is hard to say, like, you know, what, what are we, what are we purchasing with taxpayer money? Like, what are, what are we even approving for that matter?
I mean, I think if there's data you want to see, ask for it. And if we have it and can get it, we'll share it. If there's information you got last year that you felt like, well, that helped me make a decision and this year I don't have that? Ask for it. I mean, we don't know what you think you're missing. So ask for it and we'll see if we have it for sure.
Right, right.
We can put it together, but you know, it certainly, it, it is what it is at this point. And so, you know, whatever you, whatever you feel like you need to, to know, you know, ask.
Okay, so, so, but, so, yeah, so.
But like in general, this isn't the right information. That doesn't help me get you what you need. So.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Tell me what you want. And know that it can't be the line item detail of every single budget program because that's where we're hoping to get.
Mm-hmm, 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 mm-hmm.
Well, I, I'd love to hear from Dave and Hopi on their ideas for, for feedback and, and how we're doing with the incremental implementation.
Dave, do you want to go first?
Go ahead, Hopi. I'll, I'll go after you.
Thanks so much.
Um, you didn't want to go first.
I I guess, so I'm trying to process a little bit about what Councilmember Asari just said. Wait, we can be first names right now because we're at the top of the world.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I can't hear suddenly. It sounds like you're, you went into a tunnel. Is that you too, Dave, or is it only me?
Yes, it's, I can't hear either.
We could hear you really well and then it suddenly just cut out.
Keep talking. Well, is, is, is it still like that?
No, perfect.
Now, it's great. Okay. So I was trying to sit here and think, like, am I also having that similar problem that Isak mentioned in terms of being able to kind of ask those granular questions and figure out some of those details? And I think that they're not necessarily presented super clearly consistently. But I also think that, I mean, you don't know what you don't know. So like, I'm sitting here going like, okay, what are the things I don't know? And I don't even realize that I don't know. But I do feel like I've, if there are things that I want specific follow-up on, I feel like I know enough to be able to follow up on those specific things. I don't know if that is what you were looking for, Isabel, in terms of any feedback. I, I'm still trying to explore the, the, the conversation, I guess, in terms of what we're trying to get at right now. I do think that there are, you know, like, there's a lot of work to be done. I mean, Gretchen just, you know, part of it and has talked about some of it during the budget hearings in terms of creating those categories and all of those descriptions and exactly how all of that like works together and then pull it like, like, that's kind of, I'm not even sure how to engage in that conversation in some ways because it's such a big conversation. And there's so many of those categories. And, and so then, like, coming at it from that perspective, I also, like, I really see a really big staff left that has been done and then that still needs to be done.
Yeah, yeah, good point.
I guess I'm feeling like, like there's been a lot of progress and that it's, you know, and in some ways, yeah, it's probably like, like, less specific than last year in some ways. But it's going towards someplace more specific. And so, I mean, I think part of this is this like pain of transition and that we're feeling a pain in transition. And then, like, as newer council members who haven't gone through this as much, I mean, I don't know how David and Isabel feel about it. Some kind of interested in their more veteran perspective because they've just been dealing with these budgets for way longer. It, it's, it's definitely like harder in some ways to get a handle on some things. But because it's such a kind of overview, it also like adds simplicity. And so maybe that's what you're struggling with, Isak, is that it adds simplicity. But maybe our job is not to just do the simple thing. And so then it's harder from, from this seat to get into the, the part that is more complex and some of that stuff. So, I mean, I, I feel okay in terms of where we're at right now, is I suppose the conclusion. Understanding that we're not at the goal and that we can all acknowledge that we're not at the goal, but that we're, that we're all still committed to getting there.
Um, go to Dave first and then I'll go.
Okay, well, my two sentences. Gretchen, when we, when the budget was introduced this week, you and the mayor referred to, I can't remember the terms, but it was essentially prioritizing projects. And that projects that were well underway would be, obviously there are sunk costs and you would, you know, continue those. But clearly, I mean, we're going to be in a period of austerity looking forward. And it seems to me that, you know, and you probably are thinking the same thing, how to prioritize expenditures and so when it comes to, let me just back up and say, when it comes to various programs that are done throughout the city and various city departments, I'm not so interested in the minutia. I think that those projects are probably relatively low expenditure, but pay off well in terms of common good, social, social welfare. I'm more interested in the capital projects that we will need to, well, that we, that we anticipate doing. And having a, some sort of ranking in terms of discretionary. So for instance, a new fire station to me is a very high priority. It's reconfiguring Walnut and College is a very expensive proposition, but is Walnut and College function well? I mean, I don't see, i- in terms of priority, I, I rank that much lower than say basic maintenance and things that are absolutely needed, like a fire station, for instance. So if there is, you know, if these ideas resonate and you and the mayor and others, your department heads are thinking about prioritizing these sorts of projects, it would be very helpful for me to, to know that. Because it looks like, you know, we're in a situation where we're dipping into reserves and this is something that presumably can't go on indefinitely. I like healthy reserves. You never know what we might be facing. So that, that sort of ranking of priorities would be very helpful because I could see to sort of, you know, well, we don't have the money right now to do the side path on High Street or whatever it is. And, and we can debate that too. I mean, other people have, you know, we all have different priorities, but we could at least know where we're at and map it out. So, and the other thing is in terms of, like, it, it, it occurs to me that we have basic maintenance, everything requires maintenance, we have basic infrastructure maintenance that, you know, for instance, streets, I brought it up before, that we were on a 20-year road repaving schedule. That was clearly not the case. But I'd like to know what that schedule is or what sort of, how we prioritize that maintenance. Because, I mean, clearly it's needed in some areas and people do react and complain about it. So, so that's the other, is, is the basic maintenance, I think, expenditures, prioritizing, you know, in a, on some sort of continuum about, you know, what's, what we can be cutting in the future and what we can be, what we absolutely need to do looking forward.
So I think, and I'm sure Jessica could speak to this too, but you know, you're describing two different scales of capital projects. Something like a fire station is a years-long bond-based project that would probably have some annual costs in terms of design or things like that. But it's, it would be handled outside for the most part of this budget process that we're going through now. So I think that's a really important conversation and one we're thinking about all the time, especially with changing how SCA1 has changed TIF and short-term bonding and everything else has really thrown a monkey wrench into that. But those other short-term projects that you're describing, I think we tried this year in the transportation to give a better idea of here are the projects that are currently underway. What stage are they at? And, you know, what, what are the teams looking at for next year? So I think those are good questions, but, you know, just remind everyone, we share your interests in keeping up with those on the administration side, but doing that with less money means you'd have to take money away from somewhere else. And so far, like here is, how are you going to extend ARCA funding? How are you going to keep funding BT? How are you going to give more money to social services? All the conversation that I hear is how can the money keep going out somewhere else? And we might want to do, I mean, we might, we might want to do that. But I think first we have to face the fact that paying for anything, whether it's we want to continue funding BT or we want to put, go all in on a really bold sidewalk maintenance plan, which I think a lot of residents love. Or road, let's get roads and sidewalks. Amazing, like.
Right, right, right.
This is the administration, by the way. But, you know, if we wanted to go all in on those things, I think the community would love it. I think it would be really great, but you can't do that without saying, we're not going to give
Exactly.
$2,000 in grants that are $5,000 each to 30 different agencies. We're not going to do X, Y, Z. And so we can make those suggestions, but you know, Do X, I see. And so we can make those suggestions, but you know, we don't, it is a collaborative process. The mayor is elected, people tell her what she wants. You guys are elected, they do what they want. At some point, we all have to make our list of, if I was alone in a room by myself and no one was looking over my shoulder, what would I cross out? And
Exactly.
Those are hard conversations to have because everything you want to cross out matters to someone. But I would encourage all of you to make your top secret lists and compare notes at some point. You guys talk about what it does council agree, all of you agree would be areas that could cut, right?
Right, right. We're not, we're not allowed to have secret list is the, is the difficulty with that.
The secret list, not shared, but I mean, like a personal, like
I know, I know, I'm joking, I'm joking. I'm joking. Um, I, so one, one last thought, though, to wrap this up, to wrap this, I mean, because, because per the agenda item, right? I think, I think that we clear two things, one, which is the, the questions as relate to, you know, process, um, you know, these are sort of longer term questions. So we're not trying to answer those for this year, um, but that, that will be task force work going forward, right? Then the, the second, the, the second, um, the second thing that I think is, is relevant for us um, and maybe, maybe more so for us council scheduling is thinking about how we want to, uh, once we gather all of the questions periods, you know, whether we want to make any adjustment to what we've done. I mean, traditionally, we've sent in the questions, we've got written responses and that's sort of where it stopped. Um, so whether we want to further, you know, for example, a deliberation meeting afterwards to, to, to talk through any, you know, anything that arises from, from the sort of questions and to Hoppy's point of things that maybe we do, we know that we just want a little bit more detail on. And, um, so, so that, so that we don't have any sort of, when it, when is it that we actually vote on the final thing? Is it end of September? I forget the timeline again.
The public hearing is, the public hearing is September twenty fourth, and then your final vote is October eighth.
Great. Because I, I mean, again, I, we, we have, you know, one of our mantras in, in this wonderful engagement that we've had all throughout the year. And again, you know, I, 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 I have been on the record of saying it, it's so wonderful that the Office of the Mayor has been so engaged with council. And, and just, I mean, really, you know, putting your, putting your actions where, where your mouth has been, right? Like this. And so we're so for the record, again, so grateful for all of this. Um, but one of our mantras has been, let's avoid any surprises, you know, at, at, end of September that suddenly, you know, that suddenly Councilmember Asari is all upset about, you know, X thing that none of you knew about and, you know, so, 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 so hopefully we can have maybe one other session of discussion, um, once we get all those questions, um, would, would be my only thought.
And I, I really see the, I mean, I see this, the things you're struggling with with the numbers because we struggle with them internally too. And I, one thing when I look back on past budgets or information that we want is there can be a forest for the trees. Feeling when you're getting into the nuts and bolts of each department. And, you know, well, did they spend $2,000 more on supplies than last year and why? That's taking you away from realizing, oh, we're giving away 9.4 million dollars to our partner agencies or we have a grant fund that we give out that we feel good about, but are we actually getting reports on, did it do what we wanted it to accomplish? We gave the money away. We gave it away to accomplish a goal and did it do that? So there, I think that comfort level and the more you, the more we create other ways of slicing and dicing, looking at the numbers in terms of, you know, how much should we give away in straight support? How much is grants? How many are grants to residents versus nonprofits, all that kind of stuff? We still, you know, you're adding more things to your plate because you're also looking at what fund is being paid out of? Do I like what fund is being paid out of? Like, it's a lot of questions, so.
Yeah. But I do think all of this, all of this is really confirmed.
Go in that direction.
Exactly.
You just said is that there are nine of us and that, I mean, like Councilmember Rallo just said, you know, one of the things truly important to him are these big capital expenditures in that plan. And that's, um, like, each of us might have our own slightly different priority in terms of like how we're looking at the budget. And so like, I've been looking a, a lot personally at those like training and support dollars for staff as kind of a like, how are we supporting our staff kind of piece? In terms of that, like, type of retention? And trying to dig into that as kind of this programmatic element of of staff, recognizing that we spent a whole lot of money on staff and we want them to be really awesome. And they can only do what they're able to do, what they're trained to do, what they have the resources to do. Um, but, but each of us is going to want to dig into something a little different. And I think that makes it really challenging for y'all. Because then we're going, okay, like, Esau wants more of this, and Dave wants more of this, and Hopey wants more of this, and all of this, and, and then to, to, you know, maybe in a couple of years, by the time it's our last year this term, we'll totally figure it out.
Well, but, 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 but I, I actually think, I think that's a point worth.
I think, yeah, I just think that that's a built in challenge to
But, but, but I also think, I also think it's a positive point that you're making, Hoppy, is that, is that, is that all of this is, I think, very much confirming that we are heading in the right direction, right? Like, I mean, because, because all of the, what we're, what, what a lot of what we're saying is, man, I can't wait until we actually can have outcomes conversations, right? And I think all of us are saying that. So I think that's fantastic. We're heading in the right direction.
And I think that it's a bonus. I mean, it's important, I think, that there are nine of us looking at things slightly differently because that helps with transparency because there's eighty five thousand residents also wanting to look at things slightly differently. So I think that's an, an piece. I just do think that it adds challenge to this kind of process conversation that we're having.
I, I'm sorry, uh, I know that Esau is going to be swept away in just a moment, and I, I'll be so hotter hand, uh, ten minutes ago. But, uh, I wanted to, before Esau has to leave. So I think I heard him say that the budget task force will be the entity that continues in the work towards the outcome based budget. Is that
That's how I understood it.
Understanding among everybody. Okay, so that task force is going to continue into next year, so.
Yeah. I mean, that was my interpretation when I made it, I don't remember.
Okay, so then this committee needs to focus on working on, uh, do the, does the feedback on the budget process this year, both through the task force or both through this committee? Because we also need to work on the salary law system.
I think it goes through the task force.
Hoppy's example is a really good example of how we can make this shift, though. So what you were saying, Hoppy, was you've been looking at this line of basically the training line to evaluate how much are we investing in staff's professional development? And that's a great way to back out and say, if the outcome is, that we're looking for is well-trained staff who have the resources they need, that's the outcome. And that line that you're looking at is not the full story of that.
Oh, it's not the full story.
No, that's what I'm saying, but that's a great way, that's a great example of Isabel's kind of like, we need to think of the outcome, that's the outcome. Make that be one column, and then we can start slotting in, what are the things to do? That, but it helps to know that's the line you went to first to exam. So, yeah, help us. That's a, that's a great example. Like, if we know what you're looking at a particular program or line, big picture, you find all pieces that go with that or say, wow, there's no pieces that go with that. That actually does do what you want. Nothing does. We need to
Right. Right.
Um, so Lisa, you had something to say, and I, we didn't miss the moment.
No, 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 I, I'm, I have jotted down some notes to hopefully prompt me. My comments tie in really with a lot of what's been discussed here. I've been engaged in the priority based budgeting and have gone through all the tasks, just like anybody else, any other department had in the city. I, I found it to be quite valuable. Uh, and even though, um, I don't think it was possible, I think we've done what we can do this year and, and the time given, I still think that it's been worthwhile. You know, and I don't know that that would necessarily show up to, to council members at this point yet because you're not in the city offices every day, you're not, you know, intimately involved in how even council's office really, really works, but as an employee, I found it to be enlightening uh, for council's office in showing just how many different programs we operate, um, how many different priority buckets we touch. Um, the part, one part for me that's challenging is New World. Um, and, and I know I'm not alone in that, as, as Gretchen chuckles. But, um, you know, the categories on the reports show up so broadly. It can be very misleading. It's difficult to understand. And using an, an example that Esau brought up for consultants.
Right, right.
You know, a lot of what I spoke to in my presentation was it, you know, it has to fall under consultant, but it's really I, I need, I need $5,000 a year in case council gets sued. If I need to call somebody, I need to pay a court reporter.
Right, 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 right.
Still sued and I need to file a counter claim, I need money to pay the clerk. To, to file that counter play. All this stuff shows up as, as a consult, but I mean, it's more mundane than that. I, in fact, in my, in my presentation, I use the term contractor or, or services because it seems to be more reflective. And then also, I think this discussion is, is really important between the two branches and I think it would be helpful. Um, I mean, there are, there, I think we need to have, or the city would benefit from having a budget process more than what is kind of imagined right now because there are ways, as Esau mentioned, where after these hearings or even before and during the hearings, there can be engagement and it varies from, from city or county um, as to how that's done, but you could flesh that out. And one thing I had envisioned even under consultants or workshops uh, for next year was paying somebody to come in and help it lay out what that vision might be. I mean, that, that's a possibility as well. A has resources, Reedy has resources. So, th- those are thoughts that popped up while you were talking.
Can I respond to that really quickly?
Hi, Esau.
That kind of fleshing out a larger budget process is exactly what this committee should be doing. In terms of looking at that, like, long range, you know, I mean, that's, I mean, it's at the bottom of our agenda.
Right.
How to create a timeline and activity framework for the yearly budget calendar. Like, it's that exact sort of, sort of thing that this committee, long term. I mean, it's a, it's a it's a special committee right now with the vision of it being at some point a permanent committee that manages things like that, like to plan it and then keep, keep it, keep it going. So.
Okay, so, um, we are already at twelve fifteen, so we're halfway through our meeting and we have a lot of agenda items to go through, so. Is there no objections? I'd like to go back to agenda item two. Review of Office of the Mayor budget proposal. And just to, um, put the con, get the context here. I, uh, the idea is that the Office of the Mayor, the Deputy Mayor goes through in detail the budget proposals from the departments that are put to the mayor. And, um, we have gone in detail through the budget proposal that comes from this council office. Nobody has really gone in detail through the Office of the Mayor budget or the clerk budget as, you know, an independent kind of check. So that's what we're doing today. I, I really see it more as educational for us and not as like buy either $10 more here and less there.
Does anyone want to be a co-host to share the, um, screen for the worksheets?
I just have a question about the worksheets because I'm looking at these, I don't even see where the twenty twenty six budget proposal is on this attachment. Like, I see the adopted budget, which implies twenty twenty five, and then this year's current stuff. And the same thing is true with what you messaged out later. So I feel like I don't actually have the resources that I thought that I would have. And I'm thinking about like when we did this for council's office, like, we had Lisa's spreadsheet that she had made with the proposal for for twenty twenty six. We didn't have anything, well, it, it didn't have comparison to twenty twenty five numbers, but not before that. And so I don't feel personally prepared to be able to do this right now because I don't feel like I have the materials that I need. So somebody correct me if I'm wrong about.
You have to kind of combine the different spreadsheets. So I'm going to join the meeting and share a separate spreadsheet that I made that combined some of the data.
Because the twenty six budget is in the budget book.
Yeah.
And then I sent, then I just asked for twenty five and twenty four, so that's what I sent. So the twenty six budget is in the budget book and you should have reviewed it when you had your budget bearing with the mayor and not like
So I'm kind of joining the meeting.
Trying to make it more difficult, but I, I think the information is, is out there.
Recording in progress. All right, um, let me see if I can share. I'm not allowed to share.
You're a co-host, you should be able to.
So in the, in the in the bookmarks for the budget book, Office of the Mayor funding sheets takes you to the sheet that has the compares twenty twenty three actual, twenty four actual, twenty five adopted and twenty six proposed budget for the Office of the Mayor by category and line. And then, um, I think Jessica shared the detail on
Yeah, detail, also has a dash, the detail, the actual that you, like, twenty four, I mean, where we are so far.
Yeah.
That's what we did.
So here tonight, that's what we did.
We're today twenty five is what we didn't have until this packet.
Yes, that made it really confusing. When I was trying to look at that between it was like, I don't even know what I'm supposed to look at right now because I was kind of hoping for something like had already been sent out by Lisa previous when we were like working through this. So maybe that she will help those all very tiny.
Yeah, I know.
I have something similar. I mean, I, ask me anything you want to know about our budget. I know who's spending money on, so I'm happy to answer any questions about where it goes.
That's as big as I can.
And the, the highlights are just things I want to ask about, the, the
Thank you for doing this.
So I, I don't know if this, uh, is what you were looking for, Hoppy, but this is something.
That is, that is helpful.
So it has twenty twenty three actuals, then twenty four budget and actuals, twenty five budget, twenty five actuals, but as of I didn't, we fell in this once.
So how about this? How about if we go through, I'm happy to look at the lines you highlighted and start with those if you want, or, um, go through line by line and talk about what is in each of those, what, whatever is helpful. I, I want to say that as a person who, um, has done a lot of, little bit of, little bits of accounting in my life, one of the things I've learned is that when you look at these lines of actuals, what it rests on is the person who put the invoice into New World's ability to correctly categorize what they actually spent it on. And I have learned over time that people are very confused about, for example, dues and subscriptions versus hardware maintenance. If you have a subscription to your favorite tool or table, it should live under dues and subscriptions. However, most departments, many departments do not. Uh, the person who's putting in the invoices may not be a person who understands all these details. And so sometimes when you see changes, it doesn't necessarily mean that someone spent more or less on that actual item. It means to correctly recategorize where it goes. Uh, and I can speak to that for my own budget, but maybe not for others. So, yeah, I
I have a question, probably more for of anybody else. We used to have a massive spreadsheet that listed out every possible thing that you could buy at the city, including what line it should go into in New World. Do you have that still and or updated? I'm sure it's somewhere in my I drive, but I don't want to look for it.
I have not looked, I've never seen that list, so it probably hasn't been updated in a long time.
Good, good to know.
Yeah.
We have run into that same issue that Deputy Mayor Nat was referring to, of people inputting things in a slightly different category, but
I think that people should have that for their own department. I think they should have it in a departmental level.
Departmental level, yeah.
Because then they can go into much greater detail than like I am. Cause then they can go into much greater detail than like I am could for, you know, departments I know nothing about, like police. And engineering, like I don't know where all your tiny little invoices for all your tiny little things I don't understand should go.
If I recall correctly, this for the entire city for.
Yeah, it seems a little.
It was.
They're obese, but.
It was.
Okay, how about I just talk to you a little bit? Would that be helpful? Or you have specific questions you'd like me to start with, like the blue areas here?
I I think it would be really helpful for you to just kind of run down. Run down all of it and and I see that we've sold past category one, which I think is probably appropriate because we didn't talk about category one.
Would you actually spend five minutes, three minutes?
Oh, yeah. Five minutes would be fine.
Okay, uh all right, I'll talk fast. Okay, office supplies um is a fairly innocuous category. I will say that um when the next administration comes in that is not us, I will try to prepare them to have enough to buy things like new letterhead and new. There are things that change. When you have a shift administration, it it's nice to have a little wiggle room on that. Other supplies um. Uh is a weird category. That can include all kinds of things and so, you know, we try not to put too much money in there because I feel like other is a way of. Hiding what you're spending it on. It can be strange things um. Sometimes things like uh if you're giving away something that is branded with the city of Bloomington to officials who come to visit. Maybe you run out of your branded Bloomington. I'm making this up. Uh city of Bloomington coffee mug that you give to dignitaries visiting from wherever. Um it could be. All kinds of stuff, but we try to keep that number relatively low so that we're putting things where they should go. Um instruction. I don't know what has that has been used for in the past, but that is typically professional development. We used it for coaching. When Josefa was here, uh she was chief of staff, but she had never been a chief of staff and she wanted chief of staff coaching. We got chief of staff coaching. As a result of which, she was like, wow, I don't want to be a chief of staff. And um Margaret had some coaching and probably um our new incoming um special assistant to the mayor, Paige will also get coaching. It's about three thousand dollars. And it's just specialized coaching on how to how to be uh a really great uh assistant. Uh so that's how we use that line. And we left a little extra in there in case anyone has another thing that they want to do. Um you know, continuing education, the the city offers a great resource and benefit to employees for that, so that's not included there. So if I was like, wow, I really need to go get an MBA, the city would give you assistance with that, but that would not be reflected in this instruction line. Management fees, consultants and workshops. Um again, I don't know what other people used it for. I can tell you what we've used it for. Um. Uh we uh used it for that hundred and sixty two is uh from twenty twenty five, a hundred and forty. Hundred and fifty five of that is all for civic brand um project. And the annual community survey. Um the other portion of it, we had saved while we were short-staffed for some um uh comms consulting. Um that we cut for the budget for next year, which is why it's so small. Uh we you know, we've stopped a little way in there in case we need some consulting, but in general, a lot of the consulting that we need. And want is like financial consulting or legal consulting that other departments pay for, comes out of their budget. So if we had a special project, we would put it back in there, but that's not where it is. Telephone, those are uh obviously phones. I think we have four people in the office of the mayor who have uh city phones. The mayor and I do not. We tried. We did not like it. We went back to having one phone. But there are people who um our communications folks are out in the field and certainly the mayor's assistant does not want to begin unknowingly phone calls from. Uh strangers on their phone. Um we are a little bit stingy about phones in our office. More people would like them than we allow to have. Uh postage. Pretty self-explanatory. It doesn't look like we ever mail anything, but on the off chance that we want to, uh we're gonna keep two hundred bucks in there. Travel. Uh we uh it looks like I went back and looked at the previous administration and they averaged around. They always budgeted twelve thousand five hundred and spent sometimes a little more, sometimes a little less, sometimes a lot less, sometimes more. Um so uh. We uh sorry, I lost the line. We're looking at it. I had upped it because now that we have more people in the office. Sometimes the mayor will want someone else to go with her to an event for various reasons. So for example, she's going to a conference on homelessness. She might want Brian to go with her. Um the mayor's innovation project stuff that she does, her travel is all completely paid and everything is paid by Harvard, but not anyone that she brings with her. So David and Anna went, their their travel was not included or covered by that project. Um and in her first year, um she did more traveling to see what's what's good. And we've narrowed the focus to what we what she thinks is valuable. Um and I think fifteen thousand dollars is plenty adequate. Uh since there are some things that she knows uh now, she's not planning on returning to anymore. We also do as much traveling for um. Uh this the Palo Alto Sister S- Sibling Cities project. I know big contingents went in that in the past. Um we've gone to that once. We probably won't be going again and we certainly won't be sending a big contingent. It's just a lot of staff time, a lot of taxpayer dollars. It's a cool partnership, but not something we're gonna spend twenty thousand dollars on or even ten thousand dollars. So uh and this year, just today, I'll have you know she's in Washington DC for something and staying with her parents to save the city some. So uh let's see, printing, uh most of that is for handouts for things like door knocking. Or um printing signage for uh State of the City or um. Uh mayor's mayor of the market. Uh advertising and we we had extra in there for public engagement now that we have someone in that role. Advertising, um lots of advertising in bloom in the past. Um and some of that, I think, is meant as community support. We've cut back on that a little bit, but we boosted more for next year because we'll have. Um with a new website and we'll want to get some of that word out there and also some new branding from civic brand new storytelling to promote. So we bumped it up a little bit for next year, uh but that would be a one-time increase probably. And we're compensating right now for our website with advertising sometimes. I I think there's information we could be getting out in other ways that are free. Motor repairs, pretty self-explanatory. You know, we just put in. An amount and I think we rely on others to help us with what that should be. Um. Motor repairs come from the fleet, come from on the fleet department and they. Um give every department that number based on how many cars are assigned to that.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh I'll come back to dues and subscriptions, but I want to point out that line twenty two, that thirteen thousand dollars got moved to line twenty for sponsorships. There's been a weird mechanism where um the mayor's office sponsors internal events and we want to stop that practice, like if it's. A city event that CFRD is putting on, we do not need twelve different departments giving them money and having their logos on the sign. It is a city event. And the money that it costs to run that event should live in the CFRD budget instead of this kind of shop aboard. Um. Other services and charges. That's again, one of those catchalls. Mayor's promotional business is for things like, and I think that um the controller wanted to move scenes into that category. This isn't your list doesn't look quite right to me with what we've talked about, so we may see some changes in that. Things like uh if we have a big meeting with IU and uh we need to pass out flyers or. Have snacks on hand, um or we convene all of the mayors of Indiana that we can get to town for homelessness that happened. And we need to book space at the mill. Um.
If you buy.
I was like, oh, promoting a business.
It's part of the Indiana code that you can only, like you're buying small gifts to give away. It's like somebody comes and visits you. It's Indiana code has it. Um that you can have the mayor's promotional business line for those kinds of things. If you've passed that ordinance and the city has passed the mayor's promotion of business ordinance. And so certain things like that that aren't really like. City business. I guess mayor's promotion of of Bloomington in some way go into that line.
Um dues and subscriptions, most of that is software and that we there are some citywide subscriptions um or dues, membership dues to uh. I believe the Chamber. Of Commerce, which gives all city employees access to all Chamber of Commerce events. That lives in the mayor's office. There's also the International Town Gown uh lives in the mayor's office, I believe.
Is that under other services and charges?
No, that's under dues and subscriptions. So dues could be memberships or subscriptions. So there's lots of software costs in there too. Um sometimes those numbers are weird because again, things have been put in the wrong categories and now that we're full staff, we have more people who need more access. To more seats for some of the software that we use and there's a little buffer in there of, I think, two thousand dollars. That I call the productivity allowance and that is if someone finds a subscription to something that will make them be more productive during the year. I want us to have the wiggle room to get that. We really. Uh I believe we really need to encourage our staff to be current with the kinds of tools that are out there now. They can be saving us a boatload of time and as a as an organization, we are not very good at that yet. We've got big enterprise software and we have Google Sheets and not as much use of all the stuff in between that can be gigantic time savers. Um can replace sometimes proprietary tools that are a lot more expensive. So. Happy to answer anything else.
Questions for question. Okay, why has the telephone line gone up so much?
Because uh let's see. I don't know how many.
I guess it was just lower in twenty twenty five and going back up to twenty twenty four like.
Uh because two people had phones in twenty twenty five and we added. Two other people to have phones in twenty twenty six because we're full-staffed and won't be for long phones.
So the telephone line is basically for cell phones?
Yes.
The voice over IP like this phone system doesn't cost you anything?
Yeah. And so typically you would want a cell phone if you were in the field a lot or if you um are getting a lot of um. If you're going to be getting a lot of calls in the field from people who are not. Other city employees or your friends, you might want a different phone so that. You're not Adam Weis and on vacation getting a thousand phone calls and texts.
Yeah. Any other questions about the mayor's office budget?
I uh.
Yes.
So in terms of the motor repairs, that was zero for a really long time, so that's actual. I know it was zero actual. Like is it, I mean, so there were like no repairs for a while. I guess I'm just wondering if the mayor's offices always had a fleet to operate.
As far as I know, the mayor is the only one who drives the city vehicle. I it was offered to me and I declined. I'm a control freak. I like to drive my own car. Um.
Traditionally, the mayor is the only one who had a car. Mayor Hamilton, I believe, declined to have a car, but encouraged the. Um. Health and Works Director, actually, to use one because they are doing a lot of kind of running around when I have no idea of them. But I know Mayor Cruzan kind of a city.
Thanks.
But this the mayor's the only one in the House of the Mayor of the city.
Okay, any other questions? All right, um. We can go on to the office of the city clerk by. In terms of uh in the interest of. Insistency, do you mind if I share the same thing I prepared for the time?
That was very helpful, by the way. I chewed that while I was spell this one in, right, the sheet to share.
That's how I imagine all budget hearings to go, is for that to be what happens in council chambers is that. The department gets up, we look at this sheet, they explain every line, we ask questions. And we can have some other big picture conversations and that can be in the budget book, but really we focus on those actual lines and very. Explain variances. That's how I picture it going to be most productive. Just my two cents.
Yeah, and I guess that is.
In that version of this.
Yes, citywide version of this, every night, every department.
Yeah, but then also connected to purpose and outcome and program.
Uh huh.
Which these sheets don't necessarily.
Right.
Do.
Right, which still the there's value in having these discussions too.
Yeah.
Or else you don't know how those purposes and programs get accomplished. Without listening to you.
Okay, so Holden, do you want me to go through line by line as Deputy Mayor Nat did or would you prefer just to answer the questions in the interest of time?
Line by line.
Line by line.
There are fewer lines here.
That is both a good thing and a bad thing. So starting with office supplies. Their office supplies books are generally a reference to the ordinance books, so. We try um to keep enough money in the budget to replace all of our books at once. The books run. They've actually been going up in price significantly over the last few years, so the last time we priced them out, I think um. With the cost of book, the papers, which you guys have specialized books, specialized papers, even the whole punch itself. For the paper, we chose to add pages into our books. Um the whole punch was seventy something plus dollars. I had a lot of people say. From the controller's office, Nicole, you know, you can go to Michael's and get like a full punch. I'm like, trust me, I tried. Cause that was the time when I was like, this is the world's most expensive hole punch. But that is what we have for ordinance books, minutes books and resolutions. And you all know those are kept in um the fire saves in our suite. And yes, I would love to move away from the paper, but because the way it's written in code, we still have books. Other supplies are for, it's our catchall for all of the clues.
Sorry, Sir Holden, you mean the state code requires the paper?
Yes, you actually asked me that um. I think it was in two thousand sixteen or two thousand seventeen when we were talking.
Even then, it seemed kind of absurd.
You you actually kind of like, why do we have to have paper? So we we talked about it then. Special legal services is in part because state code allows us to. Contract with an attorney in terms that we see that the administration has attorneys available to them at all times. Council has an attorney. But um the clerk does not have dedicated legal staff. It's actually slightly off because last year we hired new attorneys and they have still not gotten their approved vendor form submitted, so it's probably. Supposed to have been higher in twenty twenty four than it was. And it looks like it's going to be definitely used in twenty twenty five as well, but we tried to keep it pretty steady. Instruction is what we use for additional instruction for clerk staff, so we've talked. And mostly about certifications, that's where you go for all of our classes and everything else. Management fees, consultants and workshops, if we hire somebody to do consulting for our office, that's where we do it. Our phone costs are for the cell phones, which actually will go down. Although I'm not sure yet, that's on my notes of things to ask. About, cause I don't know how much the phones are supposed to actually cost, but we still have two phones in our office. For staff members. Postage, we only have budgeted at twenty five. There've been some years where we've spent over four hundred dollars in postage because. Whenever you do something where you have to notify um. Property adjacent property owners, like for alley vacations, if for some reason we end up not doing the mailing. Through the city hall office downstairs, but have to go to the coast office, we end up paying for it directly.
Wouldn't that be if uh planning transportation? That kind of thing?
The notice is supposed to come from the clerk's office and ultimately that, no, it hasn't. And I don't think we have ever tried to say here, maybe this the.
Yeah.
I don't mind. But for the most part, it's there. Travel is the cost that it is related to getting those certifications and everything else, so. For example, uh we've had our annual conference last week for the clerk's league. The hotel costs for one person who running have one seventy nine for nine. Um I'm trying to remember.
It's there.
I'm booking it too.
Yeah.
And the funny thing is, I was the host of it.
Yeah.
But um so for four nights. Plus cost of any additional food, plus cost of travel. So we can actually add up fairly quickly for that. Um so for what amounts to five people. For doing the travel, that's where we kept it. I will say it's not just annual clerk's league, it is for. Institute Academy, annual conference and additional attorney. Our costs have been a little bit. Easier to keep down over the last couple of years because the clerk's league has actually paid for the bulk of the travel. Because I actually listen to the sir, so that was one of the things that. I said, yeah, they'll pay for it, let's save nicely a lot of money.
Let's do it.
Yeah. The resulting workload. Lots of late nights. Printing is related to the code. Um that's the bulk of the money, although we do print some other materials, but if we are. That's where we have kept money for uh. Productation. Productation, so for example, when you recall overhaul the U D O. That one chapter that was changed cost us, I think it was about thirteen thousand.
Is that also for uh, paper printing, we printing, we're talking about paper, right? We're not talking about P D F printing.
Yeah. I didn't understand the question.
Sorry, it was.
Yeah, it was part of the head process of printing, so that's where we put it. It was um. We were looking at the budget over the last twelve years, actually from the office and somebody said, why did you have that big jump in that line? And that was because for some reason, um. At one point, that money was in the public works department, even though they had nothing to do with productifying. Uh, legislation may go pass, but. Um, one of my predecessors didn't like to actually do all the invoicing for that stuff and there's somebody in public boards he did. And so they moved that money in there. Um, in the previous administration said we should have the money in the department but spends it, so. We moved it back to the clerk's office. Um, I think it was actually higher when it was in public works and then we brought it down to twenty one. In the clerk's office and then took it down further to eighteen because. That seems a safe amount to have for any patient, we're looking at title two changes and quite a bit of them, I imagine that's gonna be expensive, but I won't know until I have been. Sent to the cops. Um. Advertising. Wow. Didn't have it blinking out on this moment, so I'm gonna skip over it and hold my brain fix in in a moment. Public notices, newspaper certified means those things as well, dues and subscriptions. Are just that, dues, subscriptions, um. Deputy Mayor Nat talked about additional tools that can be used, we have tried some other tools to make staff more efficient, more effective. In their workload, some wouldn't have worked, some of them have not, but. Usually if we're doing a subscription, we try to find the free version first because. As to what you should.
Try it.
Yeah, or try it. And then um, other certs and charges. We have kept at one hundred and I genuinely would have to go back and actually look at why we spent eighteen twenty nine intentionally. Questions?
My question's very important.
What is the other supplies, I think you skipped over the category to other supplies and I noticed in twenty twenty five that is significantly over. And that makes the entire category to kind of. Not private, actually. Other supplies generally refers to things that are do not are not directly office supplies, so that is. Not pencils, pens, paper, post-its for the new office. What we did last year when we added an additional staff, we budgeted for a few things that they would need. Computer, but we did not budget for a desk. Or anything else, so we ended up playing with that. On this year's meeting. Other questions? How often do we need to replace documents books?
It depends on how much you all are doing on any given year.
Yeah, I guess I'm looking at the books line and going like, okay, keep on budgeting as though we're gonna have to replace all of them. And in the last several years we haven't had to, so like, when was the last time we had to spend a thousand dollars out of that line?
In a moment. Nope. I mean, I can write actually. So.
Or like, what is like the highest one and whatever? I want to make sure I'm looking at the correct line, so forgive me, some. Not afraid of doing this on this human time page or print. So in twenty twenty four. When we had budgeted for such twelve hundred dollars and we spent just under a thousand, we only got two books that year. In twenty twenty three. We spent about eleven hundred and. That's not what it says up there, so as though where did you get your numbers? I got them from the expense budget report that I pulled this morning, so. Is about where she got her. I know, yeah.
From the documents that uh. Jessica sent.
Happy to share these with you as well, so. Well, I think that is problematic if what you pull and what Jessica pulled have two different others on them because that's. I think you're saying. So I don't know if you guys can figure out the line that so that then we actually get accurate. Information. Cause otherwise it just seems like, why do we need to budget from four thousand books when there's. You know, less than a thousand beans then. And that might be getting a tiny hearing to tell, but I know Dave does also care about, but. I I think this does fall a little bit into the. I think if you want to have a budget for books or if you want to have a budget for any given item, that is absolutely right and understandable as a whole. I do think that it does open up the door to us coming to him saying, hey, before you pass this ordinance, we're gonna need more money. So that we can actually pay the codifier for this. And that will take significantly longer because your process overall for appropriating funds. Takes more than just coming in saying, hey, we need more money in the bank, it's not a transfer like we would do at home with city process. Well, I know, but that's why I wanna see the accurate numbers and kind of, I mean, I feel like if we are going into this period of austerity, then one of the things that we should. Seek to do is align our actual spending with our projected spending and so if. When those, when those two things aren't matching, that's another one of the things I'm kind of keen on this year is going like. Like, why is our act, why is our projected so much more than what our actual has been, so like last night I asked. Police and fire, well, I I asked, followed up with police about that, but I asked fire about that in terms of their training. And their answer made a lot of sense, it's like, oh, of course we're gonna spend less on training because when we have less officers, so we can't send them. And so with fully staffed, then we anticipate being able to send them more, so it makes a whole lot of sense. To have that line be more, and so that's what I'm trying to align right now, is that difference, and so that's a piece of this, it's like, okay, there's there's huge difference. We're going into this period or where we might have to start looking. In, you know, like, I don't know if that's what Gretchen did, when she looked through all the department budgets or not, but that is the kind of process that I would go through and look through. That has line and department budget is looking at the, the actual. You know, over the last few years versus the projected in the next year and if those two things are not in alignment, like why aren't they in alignment? And also the opposite, like, if if we're budgeting way less than has been budgeted. Which there was a police line related to that, but like, it would have been spent, being spent, being sent, and then it's like. Budgeted for half as much next year, and I asked about that as a follow-up, so that's my motivation right now with that question.
I I, that was a lot.
I wanna clarify that I got the twenty twenty three actuals from the budget sheets in the budget book.
And these numbers match those numbers. Like the, so twenty twenty four actual on books. Three eleven sixty four and it says three twelve. And then.
Adapted budgets is twelve hundred.
Yeah, it's the actual.
Yeah, I think the question is adopted versus used and coming back to your original question, how many books are actually spent? Or how many books do you actually buy? Still comes back to my original answer, which is, it depends on the council and how much legislation you pass. So we budget based on the assumption that you're going to actually pass a lot of legislation and we'll have to also replace everything. From the comfort of knowing also. That that money gets reverted back to the general fund, so it's not money that gets lost forever, at least as far as I understand. It is money that we may actually need, but will ultimately go back. So it's a, I think we'd be a different view on how that money gets spent, I understand your perspective, I wasn't really. Questioning your motive, I was questioning. The utility.
Um, we have only about eight minutes left in this meeting and we still want to do public comment. So um, are there any other pressing questions or? I mean, I recognize the.
I might talk about some things on the um, on the regular comments related to budget questions and attach something to you so there.
If you say those briefly, that question of when you are used to over budgeting for something for the worst case scenario, but in practice you don't spend that much. That's something we looked at and Jessica really cut back on a lot of the lines to, what do we actually spend and with the knowledge that. If something, if the worst case scenario happened, we could just go back to you and say, this was that time when we had the extreme situation. We need another appropriation to cover. Um, the four thousand pieces of legislation that we passed, I need to print and new books for, so, but it is the way of getting. Money that is likely not to be used to offer books.
Hmm, right.
Whenever and where we did that, we always left. You know, depending on what it was, like a thousand dollars or two or three thousand dollars in cushion, just depending on what the thing was. We are, yeah, we're all like, honestly, I think the clerk's office is really good at getting their expenses down as close to the actual performance budget as possible. And. I didn't have any cuts to make. For the clerk's budget because it was really close to actual. From what I see in the budget overall from every single department, so I didn't change anything in that budget.
Alright, let's go to public comments, is there anybody in the public who would like to comment on um. Matters before the special fiscal committee? Yes, Mr. Angie.
Hey, good afternoon, I almost said good morning, um, this is Chris Remge from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce, I just wanna reiterate a couple of things. Um, first off, to go to the the sentiment of you're moving in the right direction. This is my chamber stamp of approval that you are moving in the right uh, direction and that we're going to, it's when you build upon this, next year is going to have. I think a lot, a lot more freeway as far as having the conversations necessary to make, I think the cuts. Moving forward, especially in personnel costs and who does what as we move forward, the other one is is piggybacking on Councilmember Rallo's statement. Which I haven't gone through the budget with a fine tooth comb, but one thing I always. Curious on is deferred maintenance and something we shouldn't be cutting back on. That's something that's very short term and politically. Feasible, especially when you're talking about elected officials in for a short time, but they pay, you know, those. Cause it cause issues later on and I just wanna make sure that we are not cutting corners on that maintenance on some of the wonderful assets. That the city of Bloomington possesses, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, anybody else want to give any public comment? Alright, seeing that, um. I did uh, in the interest of getting to public comments, I uh skipped number four. Which is preparation of elected official salary ordinance, I would like to get um. Some uh, feedback from other committee members on how we should proceed with this, uh. We will, normally we would have the, what? We need to have a salary ordinance approved by. What? Is that our first?
Yeah.
The end of the year, so we do have some time and this is for the city clerk, the mayor, House of Members, okay? Um. So I don't know uh, if this should just be our discussion topic for our next meeting or. What what people think. Dave?
Um, well, we don't have very much time, but I would just say, put a plug in that. I think that we should keep up with cost of living for everyone's salary because I hate making adjustments. In the future, particularly for elected officials. Um, if we fall behind, then we have to bump up and then, you know. There are complications that arise, so um, I would just put a plug in that. Um, if at all possible, we should keep up with the estimated two point seven percent, um. The estimate for twenty twenty six. That's all.
Alright. Any other comment, should we just put this on the? Discussion agenda for next time?
I have another meeting that I have to go to at one, so hopefully. I I think we have the time that we could kind of delay it, um. I know it's agreed with Councilman Morales, but if civil city only gets a two percent increase, I think that. Is not great to. Then give electeds a two point seven percent increase, I mean, it's not much of a difference, um, and I also don't. Wanna throw out all of the work that was done last year. Around this issue.
Yeah, I think that um, impart me back to what Esat recommended, if we could have some kind of discussion on budget. Before September twenty fourth. Or before. Before that, because before the final legislation. Because I, this question of a two percent versus the two point seven percent actual cost of living is something that I take an issue with.
Should should we plan a special session around that between administration and council? It might be helpful. I I know I find the questions process really helpful to see what people are asking about and if there are. You know, we we sort of suggested, hey, if there are things you want to have. Um, make a suggestion about a place to cut, and I know that's hard when we don't have exact numbers, but even just to say, in general. This kind of place seems like maybe if those lines where there are, cut it there. I think would be helpful because I know Jessica and I would be, you know, delighted to sit down and look through and see what else. What else would we like to cut that you also indicated I would be willing to cut in order to achieve. Some of these other things like possible looking for employees or other. Uh, investments, I mean, my.
Cause that difference was like knowing it was like five hundred thousand.
Left a little less than that. I mean, we can probably find it, but. But when we start saying we can probably find it for a number of things, then suddenly.
Alright.
It's a bigger number, so.
What what week would be a good week to try to schedule some kind of special session like that, like a special work session? Like I feel like last year I remember us having a couple of those special work sessions, so I guess I'm picturing something maybe, maybe potentially during the day. As opposed to an evening meeting, I'm not sure about council availability, but what would be a good week in terms of y'all's work flow for that?
I not the week of the first recovery, as I'm sure some of others will be as well. So not that week, but. Uh.
Well, so what is the deadline, Jessica?
Um, it is September twelfth. I have to have the advertising done. Well, we always advertise high.
And the, uh, normally the fifteenth would be the deadline for the legislation.
Yeah. So like the eighth or the ninth or the tenth of September, is that at all doable in terms of administrative end before I start investigating? The council now.
We also are replies to your questions are due on the ninth, so it would be great if we could have time to read and answer all their questions, I think we would come more informed to that meeting.
Okay, I'm just sensitive to that deadline that Jessica mentioned on the twelfth.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but that's just for the rates, right, it's not specific, uh. Department of Budget Service. So what exactly is due on twelfth?
Fund, um, fund total, fund level, I think not specifically.
Okay, um, I I really have to go, um.
Alright, well, if we can. Put that in, I think that'll be very helpful.
Yeah, maybe you guys can email me this afternoon and then I can send out all, you just give like a couple of days, then I could.
I I can do this afternoon, I have to go make the budget slides, so I booked for the rest of today, but.
Well, just in terms of like a couple of days of um, window that then I can send out a a scheduling poll to council members to gauge availability.
Do you, do you intend to do that? Um. I know I'm.
Or you could just add that into the schedule.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I I just see like what week though, that we would, like, it doesn't have to be some time, just like what there's next week, what week or like what.
Seems like the eighth through the twelfth is just too close to us trying to finalize a writing to get advertising, so I feel like the only week is the week of August twenty fifth.
So, so next week, yeah, that's we, to do that because we would wanna get it done before uh, Gretchen goes on vacation.
Alright, we'll work on that, thank you very much, uh, we'll spend our next meeting, uh, through an online call, next meeting this. All right, we'll work on that. Thank you very much. Uh, we will spend our next meeting, uh through an online call, next meeting this maybe over online. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.